And then we can put that, like I said, put it together so it'd be a little cheaper all the way around.
There was a lot of interest on the first, we had no problem selling the first twenty acres off. And there's a lot of interest in the other part already from Fargo businesses, which I think is great for Horace.
Definitely.
You know, there could be a gas station there someday, there could be, um.
Well, that's where I.
Sea stores to.
Try to designate an area that would be very, very beneficial to have something like that.
Well, I think it'd be nice to have a plan. I mean, a plan of what you're thinking that is going to turn into. I mean, it seems kind of random right now, like, oh, well, if this business wants to go in and then the next business, but there's not really a plan.
It comes through approval through the board.
This is just the rezone. They don't have.
This is just rezone.
Flat or anything. It's just rezoning the property. So.
Yeah, really, this is just speaking about rezoning. I probably went further into it, but.
But if you're, if there's commercial that would go in there, that, is that gonna fit, Russ, in light industrial? Cause I don't see the, to me, that are different.
The, the original comprehensive plan, we would prefer to have commercial along the highway, right there. That's a picture out of the, the, we'd prefer to have commercial along the highway and then the industrial behind it. Now, kind of what we've got on the corner right now is kind of a blend between the two with the landscape from there. The issue, if, if we go commercial along there, there will not be gravel roads.
But I, I, I mean, Kelly's asking right now for this to be rezoned to light industrial, which is not the same as commercial.
No, it isn't.
And if we want commercial there, then I think now is the time that we should be saying that and not agreeing to rezone it to light industrial. And then saying to him, oh, but we really wanted it to be commercial. If we want commercial, now's the time.
Can somebody, I don't have the manual in front of me, explain the difference from commercial to light industrial? My understanding of it is with interstate engineering, maybe in a lax paragraph is, commercial, uh, we would definitely be paving the roads right away, curb gutter lights. So when we purchased the first tract of land, uh, we said, let's go commercial. That's, cause we didn't, I didn't read the manual, I was in, did some Fargo things. Uh, no, you might not want to because then you have to pave and do curb gutter lights, streetlights, all that, quite a additional cost upfront. Okay, so you, light industrial will fit what you wanna do. So we went light industrial, um, with all intentions of these getting paved and moving in that step. It's what we want anyway, but to get started on a project like that, um, that's why we went light industrial. So we, that's what I was told between commercial and light industrial is mainly roads.
We're gonna find is that, uh, that's not where we're probably gonna be looking for our commercial district in Horace. Down there at the very south end, we're gonna be probably looking for closer up in the middle.
But there may be, I mean, there's certainly opportunity for commercial to be there. There's no doubt.
That is correct.
And what I don't wanna do is lock us into, well, we want something commercial there and then you have something that's not that, or vice versa.
So in your guidelines does a, let's just say, for instance, something very similar to, um, Casey's or a Senex gas station or something? If that was zone light industrial, is that not correct?
Have to refer to Russell.
Yeah, they're, they're looking.
Uh, that would, cause if there's fuel sales establishments.
Quite a long list of.
Something to like a sea store.
Well, the last word, that last line are similar. Is that what it is?
Oh yeah, that's, that's been changed since with the new, um, the other uses similar to those that are listed.
Yeah, that, that similar uses doesn't actually change the, uh, it doesn't allow you to put a, uh. Okay, light industrial permitted uses, any industrial manufacturing operate, operation providing that dust, fumes, odor, smoke, vapor, noise, lice and vibration producing operations are all enclosed within the building. Assembly of parts of machinery performed inside the buildings, building material and supply establishments, contractors' yards and construction shops, electric power production and substations. Fuel sale, sales establishments, including bottom gas, mini storage, public utility buildings, uh, conditional uses. Are not agriculture related material processing production, local and regional sanitary landfill composite sites and incinerators, uh, communication towers. No, back under.
General commercial also has fuel sales establishments in it too. So I mean, you are, there is crossover between them.
Right, yeah. And in commercial, the list, uh, exhausts the alphabet and starts going to double letters. In other words, we go A through Z and then we start going AA through AE and then, uh, a few conditional uses. There's a whole lot more you can do with commercial than you can with light industrial.
But the roads must be paved.
Oh yeah.
Right away in commercial.
Yes.
You know, you think from the frontage to one hundredth avenue.
Okay, they're gonna have, they're gonna have limited access. They are, Julie, what, what's the closest they can have access?
I don't know the number.
It is limited though.
They, they have extremely limited access.
Like that approach.
They have that approach. They may get one other, one other approach, but they're not gonna get an approach anywhere, anywhere close to the intersection.
No, it's twelve hundred feet or something, which is, yeah.
Yes.
That would make sense.
Yes, it does.
But as we put in on plan that was up here before, I mean, it does make more sense to have commercial along the road.
If there was gonna be a road, it'd be along the road, although it's gonna be along the front road actually.
Right.
Right, right. Which again would be fine because that's a main thoroughfare. So on the front road is, it does make sense.
Okay. So what do we wanna do? Anybody got any other comments on this besides Kelly? It's a public meeting, so.
So when it goes through, just because I know that there's a mill trail across there, will this mill trail still be on County Road seven hundred? I don't use it.
Yeah, that's still right away. It's, we have nothing to do with that. That's county right away, state.
Russell, you got any recs on that, recommendations?
Well, we recommended going with the light industrial on it. We, uh, we, with the thought process of, if he ends up with folks who, who see that as a good commercial place. We'd be happy to, uh, look at another rezon for commercial in front. If what they're looking at for commercial doesn't fit on light industrial. The, again, the issue we're gonna, we're gonna be looking at is, uh, if you have notice across, you probably didn't see us, but across the road from County Road seventeen. We also planned commercial all the way down County Road seventeen on the, uh, on the, uh, there. And, uh, I can pretty much guarantee that that's not gonna happen. Tarred and feathered, uh.
Yep. All right.
Anything else, Kelly, that you wanna? Um, I don't. I, I think light industrial gives us a start. Uh, we have all the right intentions. You guys have final say when it gets approved along one hundredth in the red zone anyway, which you have on seventeen already, where our current buildings have already went. So at that time, if something doesn't fit, um, or, and you feel, okay, we need a, keep saying a gas station or something, then you change, uh, to commercial in that piece. But it gives us a start. It starts a project in Horace that I think is gonna be good for the community, so. Um, we have no intentions of, it all, it, the, just final say comes to the city of Horace, whether it's planning, zoning, or the council. So.
All right, so with that, then, uh, so anybody's got anything else? I'll close the.
As an adjoining property owner, I have no objections to that being a rezon light industrial.
Okay. All right, anybody else got anything they wanna comment on that or, okay, then I'll close the public hearing. All right. So we need to, uh, at this point, what?
So you can act on it or table it?
All right, but we can act on it. Unless you guys got other questions that you wanna, I mean, to me, it's just kind of a.
I'm, I'm looking at the recommendation from the planning and zoning commission as being approved, correct? Russ? So this is consistent, albeit to your point, Sharon, it's not exactly what we wanted to be using that. We want that commercial in the future, so this does not prevent us from allowing to still continue to make that commercial in the future. But it allows us to proceed with making use of that and from a infrastructure infill standpoint, I think this is consistent with what we, from a public works and planning areas, so I would.
Kelly, I, and one of the things is, should the diversion go through with their latest iteration? Keep in mind, there's nothing going on the other side of that, that road.
Potentially on the corner, potentially.
Uh, on, on the corner where the farmstead is.
Correct. That's, that's the only area that.
That's the only place, there, we're not gonna put any.
We've still got work to do.
We're not building up any residential down there. We're not building up anything else, no more industrial down there. We, we got hammered on land.
Yep.
But as a main, main access road, which is probably gonna be one of the only ones we're gonna have until whatever day. If there's ever a day that seventy-six ever gets brought all the way out to the interstate, it's gonna be, the only hope we have for commercial on a main road is on that side. And so i- it's a concern because it would be a good spot for some types of commercial. I mean, I'll, I'll give you, it's not, you're not gonna put every kind of business on that. In that area, but there are some kinds of commercial that it really would be a good spot for. And so the, the concern that I have is that when we go light industrial and the people that are wanting to do the development. You know, the first location they're gonna pick is the one closest to the road, which then, if there's any commercial that comes out after it, it's all going on the inside and that's not where we want the commercial to be.
Uh, prices will deflect certain companies. Uh, it will be staged price wise. Obviously, the frontage is most valuable by far. There's gonna be a considerable difference going to the north, going less in price, but.
But you know what I'm saying?
Oh, I definitely do.
I mean, you understand, it's not, it's not about the price, it's about.
That's the, that's the, that's the job of the planning and zoning. I mean, I, we wouldn't even sell it to a, let's say, auto junkyard. I, I won't even do that.
But I mean, at the zoning point, this is the point where, you know, if there's some point that we would really like to see commercial, I really think now is the time before. Before it all turns into something and we go, oh, wow, I wish we really had thought about that. I mean, especially because it wasn't our plan that that was gonna be commercial. And then you have the diversion. It's just, the time is now to think about. To, to really think about this before we approve it and make sure that in twenty years, we didn't make a mistake today because we're just like, oh, well, we could change it later. Historically, once we change it, we don't usually change it again to something else. And, and that's my suggestion is maybe we just think on it and even come back in two weeks and just give it some thought. Do, because it makes sense to have some commercial there.
I think there's sufficient time for, uh, your panel, planning and zoning to think about it when the proposed buyer who wouldn't own the land at that time. Would be coming across the board to present their building plans and whatever they want to do.
But they're not gonna tell them, no, we want this to be safe for commercial. That, that's not their job at that point. Now's the time.
Can I offer maybe a, what prevents you from wanting to go with commercial versus light industrial?
Paving the roads, initial infrastructure costs.
You know, I, I believe in creativity.
Mm-hmm.
Very much so, so.
We are a small, it's a family deal. It's a small, it's a huge project for us to do a hundred and fifty acres that, and then to do roads, um. It gets, uh, very large dollars and that gets out of our.
I'm also a believer on when to do roads at a certain point and in what extent, because does it make sense to do, do a tar road or a paved road? You've got all the construction and all it does is get torn apart and we're having to reassess people? Absolutely not.
Yeah, it's not.
But I know we're also bound by ordinances, so is, is there a creative way that we can maybe get our commercial zoning that I don't think you're objecting to?
Mm-mm. We, that's a great way.
And, and one of the things we've talked about is economic development.
Mm-hmm.
We love people wanting to invest in our city. We also wanna help you. You know, we, we all wanna hear what people want in town. We wanna help bring, we wanna put the connections together. So how do we oversee a paved road right away and a commercial zoning?
I mean, can we do something where every commercial goes in within a certain time period, there has to be a paved road, uh, instead of doing the road first?
Cause you would eventually do it, correct? But you're needing the.
Well, we, we would, but at that time, after you sell lots, we no longer, so I, I believe, uh, the city would do it and be assessed. Yes.
There's a percentage, so.
Yeah.
I always say I'm a drywall guy.
You could say fifty percent.
Experts to come up with a plan to make it work.
If that commercial became fifty percent sold, um, start talking paving then. We, I, like I said in the opening comments, is we want, we'd do paving now if there were, if there was an option and we got assessed and, and, uh, but it's a small roads right now and it's not tying into. But now we're making moves to do the larger project and it's because of roads where we stayed light industrial.
It's definitely a huge opportunity for us to keep commercial there. I agree with you, Sharon.
So do we ask for an adjusted plan? Are we going, saying we want adjusted plan to say, show that frontage area being commercial? Not necessarily that it will be built out right away, but yet we would come up with a plan to, to say we want that section to be commercial and then the, the back areas. The middle of those, that fifty acres, for example, would be light industrial.
Just like what was drawn up there, I think is what we're talking.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's really gonna be, um, three rows back, commercial, you know.
But that, but that's what I mean. Do we, do we go to the next level of detail, show to, instead of changing it all to light industrial right now? Do we take it from A to this section of being commercial, this section being light industrial, as we're pointing out, to be consistent with the, the zoning?
And then try to be a little bit creative with the roads.
Yeah, I, we're all on board for that.
We, to John's point, we can then look at how can we creatively come up with a plan to build that infrastructure together.
Yeah. I'm not sure the date when we got, Vista's first approved, two years ago maybe, cause last year, um, you know, that, that's all light industrial.
Right.
And did that follow suit? My brother's putting up, he has approval for his brand new building. That's gonna be a commercial building in light industrial. Uh, our rental buildings, I have my shop in there, um, there's a trailer business, a guy who does trailer repair. There's computer guys in those buildings. So there's been a lot of, and that's in light industrial, so, um. The way everybody kinda wants to stay is out of the industrial for what we're selling at. The corner is a landscaping company. One north is a, uh, heavy, uh, they're not heavy, but they're, I don't know if they want their name said, so we've kept the middle one kinda quiet, but it's all been more in that commercial.
But I, I get it. I mean, I mean, today it's, right now, that section is light industrial, but it's a small section.
Yeah.
Right. This is a much larger section and we much prefer this zoning plan to reflect the, the, what we want this to be. And I, Russ, I'm looking at you to say, you know, we, we want this to reflect what we wanted from the, uh, comprehensive plan. So I, I guess that's the request. When, can we go back to modify this and rezon it so that goes from agriculture to what we had planned it to be long term? And then we can work on this plan.
Can I even bring up one more? You take the corner that's already developed. Anything, I'm looking at Russ, anything in there, does that not qualify for commercial? Cause, yeah, you're not, to me, you're not necessarily industrial or light industrial on the front there.
No, he's more, it's gonna be a landscaping company. It's A and L landscaping and they're gonna have their equipment, a service shop.
The, the issue, the issue here is the landscaping, it has a contractor's yard. Remember hearing about contractor's yards?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. That doesn't affect those in, in, in industrial, not in general commercial.
Yeah, I mean, you look at that facility now, it looks rough, but the building was put up in November, early December and, uh, I feel they're gonna do a great job keeping that corner looking nice, whatever they're zoned at, but, yeah. It fits under light industrial.
Whole point, cause we had to give variance, uh, for that, and it's also why, one of the large changes we made to the ordinances was the setbacks. Because his original setbacks would have had his contractor's yard in front and now it's behind the building. And, uh, the setbacks did not make sense from the original zoning change to all those areas.
So, what do you guys wanna?
So, can we, and I don't know who would do this, but go back to what we were just suggesting, Kelly's open to that, and change the.
Change it to what it actually says.
To what.
To what maps reflect.
Right. To, to reflect the commercial on the front third, closest to.
Right there.
One hundred and then.
I think as long as you give an agreement, we're all on board. Um, if we can have an agreement with planning, zoning, that, that strip stays commercial or you switch it all to commercial. A percentage of its cells must be paved or, uh, at three year mark or something, two year mark, then it, then it all gets paved. Um, we're fine with any of that.
Can that be done, Lucas?
Well, my concern is describing it in the ordinance, you, you're creating an ordinance with rezon, so this gets recorded with the county that says, okay, this area is now going to be commercial. This area is going to be, uh, light industrial, so we need to be able to put that in the ordinance. Typically, when it's done, it's lot one, block one type deal. This, there's, it's not, it's not that way.
Would we choose separate rezones, one for commercial and then the second one?
Well, it's either, it's, it's either platted or it's, it's a meets and balance type description, legal description, where you're actually going in there surveying and this is now what gets surveyed and this is going to be commercial and this is going to be, um, light industrial. You know what I mean? Cause you, you have to describe it so then future buyers know this is now zoned this way.
Or you do second addition.
That you're buying.
Vista's second addition is commercial, third addition, the north of that would be light industrial or however.
Well, that's platted, so then you're getting your.
I guess that's, that's a request, is that we go back and plot it that way so that we can rezon it the way according to the condition or the, the comprehensive plan.
Well, this is like, yeah, this is the cart before horse type deal.
Yeah.
So you have to rezon section, whatever, this section, this way to commercial and then the other section.
So if you, if you look in his application, what's being rezoned, they used, um. The legal description, so this is what we're going by. They provide the legal description, so then now we know, uh, in our office, okay, this is what's actually getting rezoned. And so this will show up in the county's records as rezoned to light industrial.
So you're gonna have to create.
So what would hap, what they, what he would have to do is hire someone to actually survey the property and then do the.
Which is interstate.
And to do the actual legal description that way, so then you know, okay, here's the actual area that you're trying to rezon and what it's going to be.
I have one fear, um, with turning backwards is, uh, with our building season, we're already late. Time is the essence. Uh, I know, I understand decisions are last forever, but, um, you know, we're, uh, next step is working with interstate on designing the plat and what the actual project will look like. Um, at that time, it comes across to your board. Also, so time to us is, uh, very important too. Plating's gonna take another sixty days, thirty to sixty to even get that approved before we can even break ground and get roads built. Once roads are built, then we get final stamp to even start selling lots. So we're looking in late summer to even.
But that's where you're looking at today anyway, Bill, right? I mean, even if we approve this tonight, you're probably looking late summer before.
That's reality, yes. But if it goes backwards again now and goes back two weeks, has to be reposted in the paper, um, for another thirty days and then start the whole process over. That takes us out of the summer, then, uh, interest on a project like that is what kills it.
But there's no other way to have one, or I'm asking, is there another way to rezon part of it to commercial and the other portion to light industrial? Is there another way?
Besides what I'm, what I explained type deal?
Well, the question.
I just can't, there's no way to describe it, just to say, this many acres is this and this is that, that.
The question is, can we, can we put the condition on the approval to say, we'll approve this rezoning with the condition that you come back with a replat of. Areas along one hundredth to be rezoned to commercial, so that you can proceed with the plans and plating and so forth for those other areas. Knowing that we'll come back with a updated plat to include those areas to be commercial. Can we allow you that?
I have no clue. That's up to you.
That's why I'm asking.
Your panel then.
Because we're open to flexibility if we can find a way that.
Cause I, I get it. You, you don't wanna lose the construction season.
No.
Just the way it's.
Well, the concern with that too is you don't know what the plat's going to look like.
It hasn't been plotted.
It's not been plotted. You don't know what, what lot's going where, how big the lots are going to be.
But that's.
But we got the area that we want.
You have a general area.
Well, and that's really what this is. I mean, it's a hundred and fifty acres of light industrial. Without having that plat, it's impossible for us to, you know, to say, okay, these two lots on along one hundredth or whatever should be commercial. There's no way to know that.
There is, cause I have the, we have a legal description, so let me just type that in. You, it will take you foot by foot on that whole entire parcel.
Yeah, but because it's all agricultural today, there's no plat layout for this of which lots, lot, there's no lot layout for this.
Well, yeah, it's just taking one and turning it to the other, taking egg to light industrial.
Right.
Yeah.
But now we're saying the same thing when that comes out, to take the, these lots and make them commercial in the future.
The question is, how, how do we do that?
Seven six you need for commercial lots.
So my point is, you're just, you're just guessing. You're just saying, yeah, we'll take it a hundred and fifty.
Of course, that's what we're doing. That's the best we can do at this moment.
Well, right. We, we have no other information that we could say what, what it can be or can't be. So, cause it's a hundred and fifty acres, it's one block.
And that's why I'm saying you have it surveyed and you say, you say how big you want it to be. This is how big we want the commercial district to be. And then it's surveyed and then you have the survey that shows, okay, this is now your description. And then it's surveyed and then you have the survey that shows, okay, this is now your description of where you want, commercial. Foot by foot walks you through it and then the other chunk, whatever remains, is now light industrial.
But until we get interstate to go do that, modify this map, come back, all of a sudden we put this plan back, too much.
Or more. So, is there a way we can do that? It's still the same questions.
So, you're saying probably not then.
I mean, well, we could also do, as you know, that rezon, it's an ordinance, there's two readings. You do a first reading and then your ordinance can get...
So, this is a first reading anyway?
It could be a first reading if it's approved.
Next meeting, so it's a month turnaround.
Also, we're kind of approving the first reading.
They always, all your ordinances require two readings.
Change.
That's, I'm saying, that's probably your best way of doing it is to do that and then revise the ordinance.
Can that, can this come back with a second reading?
Yeah, I just don't know the timeline of how long it takes to survey it or to say, okay, now here's the area that we want to be, uh, commercial and what we want.
Jim, what do you think? You can get out there tomorrow, right?
Well, yeah.
It's not snowing tomorrow, also get busy.
Where do these numbers come out of the blue sky that, um...
And that's what I mean.
You guys have no guidelines now on what that red zone is, it's just shaded red and...
So, well, that's the question. So, from the comprehensive plan today, is there any definition of what that resident or the commercial zone is no longer?
And so, this is my problem, is now you're telling me to define this through an ordinance and I don't know how big you want the commercial district to be.
And that red zone is known as a wish? All zone, all the purple, the red is what you wish it to be, it's not...
Do we have any guidelines at, at all, Russ, for the depth and for the commercial on the frontage of seventy-six? How deep those should be?
Seventy-six?
Yeah.
All, all I, all I know is when I, when I felt that, do you see to the flag around commercial seventy-six?
We probably do. It's, look at A and L landscaping, how deep theirs is. That's two point six some acres. The depth north and south from the center of the road is probably three hundred feet.
So, I mean, you could also look at your ordinances and what's required for lot coverage or lot sizes as a way to go with.
I mean, the lot lines are already set out there. You see the first two, that's gonna go the same.
Yeah, if you just follow that line's...
The minimum size for a commercial lot is one acre. Uh, lot width shall be two hundred feet.
I mean, if you just took that line, if you scroll, scroll.
I think we're missing the fact that that phase one or, uh, zone, industrial one is already, the depths have been set north and south.
So, yeah.
Not, not, not your road, not that road, the lots already have a depth, cause we have sold lots there already. That's what you're missing. We can't, it about has to follow pattern. What are you gonna do, come in or go wider and...
Well, I think that's the question. If we just took that line...
The pattern's been set by...
Straight along one hundred to keep that same spacing, I mean...
Which are about, I would say it's three hundred feet, maybe four hundred north and south.
Would that seem reasonable to you?
I have no problem, it's...
Doesn't seem reasonable for the use.
Well, I guess there's something there now, so...
You, you have two lots on a hundredth now that are light industrial already. That's been approved by this board.
I understand, understand. So, I just, we don't want, we want the rest to be commercial. So, how can we get, make that happen? So, if, if there is some definition, we can clarity around that, is it two hundred foot, is it three hundred foot? So that this, this modified layout could come to the next, maybe, you know, second reading, that'd be the best case scenario. So, we're throwing this to Lucas and Jim, pull it off. And a miracle happens here.
All right, but in the meantime, okay. Sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, so in the meantime... Do you want your city attorney to act on it? I just, I just drew it.
Nice.
There's your commercial district, there's your light industrial.
We're also asking planning and zoning.
I have a question. This is not my area of expertise. Could it, could you make a condition that should have since that the future lots on the frontage shall be commercial or something like that?
They have to be zoned, cause it, it gets recorded with the county, so then the county can look it up and...
It's the rezoning.
Yeah.
I would've gone along with that.
Yeah, but, okay.
So, I guess that's, can, can we go back? Can we go back and get this included in there?
I recommend, yes, haste.
Hundred percent. And that's what you've been telling the planning commission, engineering and the city attorney for the last year is stop rushing this stuff and pushing it down our throats.
Well, okay, so, but it...
And so, right now, I just drew a squiggly line across this.
As long as it was a squiggly line, that's good. No, but I mean, okay, so when I was looking through here, the, the staff report was basically, uh, recommend a denial at this point? Is that what it is, I'm reading that right?
No, the, the staff report has a, a section for reasons to approve and then reasons to deny.
Okay, so that's what I'm looking, just for the approval part, then I'll see the other part.
You guys had recommended approval.
Correct. Yes, the planning commission recommended approval.
And the denial recommendation comes strictly from the zoning.
Based on what we were just discussing.
Exactly.
Yep.
And so, I think just we find that compromise.
Okay, so to keep it moving, I think we, I think we gotta keep this moving, so...
Sit on this too long.
Let's, I'll make a motion to approve the first reading, right? That's what this is.
Yeah, this will be the first reading and then...
Are we, are we approving it with those changes?
Yeah, that's it.
No, Wes says no.
Yeah, that can't.
Cause then we'd have to go back to planning and zoning.
Still has to be defined.
Correct. And it, I mean, the way that I would define it is there's already existing lots there, like you said, that have the depth.
Right.
So, I would just take that and that's where that line is. And then designate this as commercial and this as your light industrial.
Yeah, which makes, I mean, I think that makes sense.
And that would have to be done before you could do any second reading.
We can't, because that's, gotta go back to planning and zoning that, right?
But we get, yeah, but we can move on with the first, with the first reading and you can make the change between the first and second reading.
Doesn't have to go back to...
Or do you need to go?
The planning commission just makes a recommendation to the city council.
I was, I was gonna say, it's, it's been to us. Uh, the, the next thing that comes to us is, uh, is the preliminary plat.
Correct.
Okay, so...
So, my thing is right now, you would be making a motion to approve the first reading contingent on commercial district being added. And it's literally whatever this depth is, we're running it down on one hundredth.
I'd be, I'd be comfortable with that.
Have we seen light industrial's bigger? It just has to be, these would have to be one acre and two hundred feet wide.
Uh, I have some scare here that this is going, but it's, it's fine, um...
And that's, it, it's either that or we table it and then define the commercial.
But then we have to go back and start over with zoning, cause zoning has approved light industrial, planning and zoning has.
I'm given options.
Yeah.
Well, and then there'd be a, a, what did you call it, John? Some sort of compromise on when the road could be put in.
Right. I think that's what the other caveat to this.
Yes, I think that's important.
Am I missing something? But we're calling this the first reading of rezon?
Okay, your zoning is a regulation.
Right.
That's why you have two readings.
Okay. So, as long as we...
It's, it's an ordinance.
So, we approve it as is right now?
You'd be approving it.
With no changing.
You'd be approving light industrial.
Light industrial.
Egg to light industrial for a hundred and fifty acres.
And I will not support it for the second reading if it's not changed. Would be the way, I can't say that in a motion.
Well, could it, is it possible to approve it with the changes? Approve it pending the change?
It's an ordinance, the city council can amend its ordinances between first and second reading.
Right, so that's, that's where it's just a matter of...
That's why, that's why I'm giving, I'm giving you the option of how to do this. It's to approve it, approve the first reading contingent on commercial being added. And it's commercial being added with the depth of this lot. It's already defined, there's already light industrial down there.
I would make a motion.
Contingent with commercial being added and a, what did you call it? A extension of time for the road or something like that?
Do we need to worry about that?
That's, that's something that's done with, uh, plating.
Do that. Okay, so Brian's made a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, John makes a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
I'm very confused, so, I guess, uh, I'll call Lucas.
Just work with engineering and with me, we'll get through this, we'll have it ready to go defined by the next meeting. And like you said, if it's not changed, then you just don't approve second reading, it doesn't get done.
Um, do you guys have an idea what you would wanna talk about with the roads? Maybe you have to think about that.
What you proposed to me makes sense. When you were talking about a timeframe of the amount of road or amount of lots sold.
Yeah, a percentage or a, probably a...
I think it's a percentage.
I think that's a sure percentage.
All right, we'll come up with something like that.
It'd be silly to do it right up front.
I agree.
When you get to a certain point...
Wreck everything.
Yeah, let's find out what makes sense too for the durability of the roads.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Kelly. All right, next up.
Mr. Mayor, the next easy item I have is, uh, Tara Gardens addition, um, final plat, public hearing. The, uh, Mr. Dwyer's not here. I told him that we would have the public hearing. I'm not sure if you guys want to discuss it further or if we just wanna do the public hearing, table it to the next meeting or...
We're, we're ready to move.
Ready to go?
Jack and I, and just talked about that, for this morning, you know, before.
Okay, so, it's a public hearing tonight for Tara Gardens, just over here.
Over there.
Um, final plat, you approved the preliminary plat. Um, the planning commission at their meeting last Tuesday recommended approval of the, um, plat as is. And as stated, the applicants are here, so if you have questions, they'd be happy to answer them. And the plat is up on the screen.
Okay, so, I'll let, when you fellows get started here.
So, what we're handing out here is a copy of the plat, plat.
Okay.
Seventy-four instead of eighty-one lots. A lot, we had got rid of three along the preliminary approval pack. And we'll talk about the new ones for just to... Justin would be cutting it too.
Seventy-four instead of eighty-one is what you said, right? So, where do the lots come out of? Are they just making some of the lots larger?
Yeah, when we got rid of the, you know, the command after this thing with the twin home builders, nobody wants anything really under forty. So, we got rid of most...
Forty, forty frontage feet?
Yeah, so everything's forty or above.
Okay. So, that's what drove it?
Three on the west side to try to, you know, address some of the council's issues with, you know, the buffer zone and that, that thing too. So, there are no twin home or under forty lots. So, again, the, uh, the big packet you got, that's from the preliminary approval, just so you can prepare.
So, this was, this was the preliminary, this is final, right? The, the, this one is the final?
That, that's right.
Give Lucas a second to get back in here and get on with this. Okay, we'll, uh, we'll go ahead and open the public meeting then, and, uh, go ahead.
Okay, so I'm Jordan Morckless with Lowry Engineering. And also, uh, with us tonight, Justin Berg with Peaceful Plains Holdings and Fenberg Properties, the, uh, the owners of the properties. Um, the, the exhibits you have in front of you, the, the preliminary approval packet and a final plat. The notable changes from preliminary to final are that the total lot count was reduced from eighty-five to seventy-eight. The overall layout is unchanged. The lot count was reduced by making some of the lots wider and larger in area. Uh, all the twin lots, lots that were between thirty feet and forty feet wide were all increased to a forty-foot minimum so that they have the option for a, a single-family home on them.
But seventy-eight includes the park.
That includes the part of the lot, it's really seventy-four, correct? That, that's correct. Thank you for clarifying, Justin. Uh, I believe all the conditions of the preliminary plat have been met, so we're asking for final approval of Tara Gardens addition.
Okay, so you guys made some of those lots a little bit bigger than, that's like you eliminated, you eliminated some lots, cause you made them wider, right?
That's correct.
And then some of that you put into the, um, the park area or was this just strictly the lots? You just made those lots wider when you removed those five?
Strictly lots.
Yep, okay. Clarifying.
Yeah, no, good question.
Planning and zoning approve this.
Yeah, just, I don't see anything on here. Russ, what was the concerns with the drains in the park? Can you refresh me? Is that gonna be dry enough for park space there and, or is it gonna be just...
The drain, the, the park is not retention pond. That's, that's... The park is not a retention, no, it's not a water retention.
Correct, and there's a lot on the plat for the detention pond that is designed to hold the, uh, the tenure event.
Russ, was there a concern on the street width at all? Because of, or why, as we discussed, is that?
I'm sorry, other than cost, I like white. Uh, it can actually give you some parking options, which was part of the reason for the, the white.
Well, it gives you the ability to move a couple of cars down at the same time as well.
Well, yeah, but, but it also gives you a parking capability, uh, cause when they come for permits, then we look at, uh, the driveway plans.
You know, I've questioned the, the road with, you know, Prairie View is narrower than this one. And yeah, granted, in a perfect world, I'd say spend the money on it, but I've never understood why we over, to me, at times we oversize infrastructure for those few occasions a year where we've got a lot of people over.
The reason for this was with the density, you don't have parking on both sides, which was a direct, uh, issue of the council. And so, we had to answer that and keeping it at the minimum for all we could do for parking on both sides of thirty-six instead of forty. Cause you gotta, to get people in these homes, you don't know how to exist without.
Yeah, roads are gonna be by far the same.
But at the same time, I think it was, uh, the density, which is part of getting these more developed opportunities to make it livable. You know, there's gonna be tarred driveway if anybody comes. And I think, I think that was a concern from the council for when we adjusted from the initial theory too.
Yep.
I've been low, I've been probably the lone one to, to go the other way with it. You know, to be honest with you, a lot of the developments around it are higher density. I think, uh, thinking of the one over West Fargo, the streets are narrower and all that. I, I've, I've said it for quite a while now. I'm an advocate for lower specials and lower infrastructure costs. And we've gotta figure it out. You know, if it's not, if it's, if it's bringing a lot of cost...
Down to a narrower, so it's...
If it's lot costing needs to come down, something has to give, because costs are going through the roof.
Which is why these lots, a lot from there for fifty, you know, that's thirty thousand, twenty thousand in specials, right? Which is, you know, why we're trying to create this larger park space, shared space connectivity to, you know, try to make it livable. And it has some time to...
Yeah, I mean, it's no secret, I'm not a fan of small lots, not in any way, shape or form. And these, there's so many of them that are under a quarter acre that it, it gives, like, I don't even feel comfortable. it gives, like, I don't even feel comfortable with it because it's, you know, I don't wanna be that, that's not what we are. And that community where you can hand the sugar out the window to your neighbor and you can hear him sneezing at their house, hear the toilet flush, I mean, that's like, that's just not what I want. But, that being said, this is the second reading, which means it's moved all the way here, so. Just go on the record that quarter acre, which means plenty small enough.
I think that's a three hundred fifty to four hundred thousand dollar house, you know, is the issue.
Well, no, that depends on what you, it depends on what you build, you don't have to put a four hundred thousand dollar house on it.
Cost of land, cost and several values, and kind of what becomes the market dictates.
But it's what you build on it, right? You've got a lot, you can build anything you want on it, and you don't have to build a four hundred thousand dollar house.
So that's a hundred thousand, that's a lot of specials.
Right, but you don't, but you can build a hundred thousand dollar house too.
But a hundred thousand, the house on it is still three hundred thousand, or two thousand, so it's a lot, it just doesn't happen, you know, the more you have.
Alright, anybody got anything else here?
No, I talked about the roads in the first reading and asked, you know, I, I obviously should've voted against it in the first reading if I was that passionate about it. No, I'd make a motion to approve the second reading.
Well, first, Brian, you got anything you wanted to add on this? Alright, John makes a motion to approve, second.
I'll second.
Alright, Brian to the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yep. Thank you.
Moving along, Lucas.
Mister Mayor, the next item, uh, trees. Second reading of the tree ordinance, uh, has not changed, but I did add some um documents to the list to support the tree ordinance.
Which is the tree list, which can be amended. Uh, the tree planting permit.
Oh.
It's just a lot, I made a lot of changes.
Oh, I see, okay, I thought this was, right.
And then the boulevard tree removal permit.
Oh, you made a subpoena?
Uh, they have enforcement.
So yeah, like I said, these uh, these documents are created to support the tree ordinance. The tree list will also support the uh, or be used in the landscaping. Ordinance that was recently passed by the city council, and that requires these new subdivisions to, to plant trees, and now they have a list that uh, they can go by. And it's, it's a list that's used in West Fargo as well, and I'm assuming West Fargo got it from the county, and those are trees that are suitable for um our climate.
Yeah, they either got it from the county or from NDSU, that's right.
And it's, it's from, yeah, it's, it is from NDSU, that's right, cause I have the extensions website at the bottom, so then people can click on that, if they go on your website, then click on the link and then it'll take them to uh, NDSU's site for further details on the trees.
So Lucas will be adding.
And doesn't NDSU, wouldn't they come out to your property? Soil check or whatever, who would say that?
The Soil Conservation District, well.
That's who.
So Cass County, well, I do mine through Richland County, so then Richland County will tell you.
So won't there be a uh, a, a fee, fee, not a fee ordinance, a fee.
Schedule?
Fee schedule, yes, for the tree planting permit, like five bucks or whatever that.
The ordinance says that there is no fee.
So they just have to fill out the paperwork to say, claim that they have, they have read this and that they're picking a tree.
Yep.
This is specifically for the boulevards, right? This isn't for any tree.
This, yeah, this, well, this tree list is one that's used for the developments, but I'm just providing it tonight because we're talking about trees.
But I'm saying, if, if I pick a tree that I.
Plant in your yard, yeah.
Or that's not on this list, it's, I have to go get a permit for that, this is specifically for the, in new development.
Yes.
But the tree list is useful.
In the right of way, in the city horse right of way.
Yes.
But the, but the tree list is useful.
For residents, so they have an idea, yes.
In their yard.
Can't disagree.
What kind of tree should I plant, then here's the list of trees, what's missing is.
And it's not missing, the, the ordinance said that there will not be a fee charged, so I didn't put it in there, I could've added one.
No, I was saying what's missing is the evergreen list and the um.
You don't want evergreens in your boulevard because then it obstructs.
No, not in the boulevard, but as the tree, in the tree list, you can put them in your yard.
But you put whatever you want in your yard.
No, that's why you have a tree list, if this is what you want planted.
Further, well, yeah.
But because they don't want people planting ash trees, is the, the purpose, there's certain trees are trying to.
That's, but the point is you could interpret this as being, does it have to be on this list to plant the tree? Or am I restricted to this list, or is this just like a guideline?
Well, and that's why.
That's gonna be the question we're gonna get.
Well, I think that's where we need a tree, the, the tree, the forestry committee will come up with a tree little handout that will have that level of detail in, you know, talking about, if you, so like suggestions to residents, right? You wanna plant a tree in your yard, you should look at the tree list that has good recommendations, uh.
But that's separate from the right of way.
Correct.
So.
This is for the right of way.
This, this is, so maybe that would be one small changes to, I don't know if it makes sense to say.
Well, cause this says.
Tree list for the right of way.
It says that, well, I guess this doesn't, but the tree planting permit to the boulevard tree removal.
Yeah, so I mean, the tree planting permit is clear, that it's the right of way, so I'm.
But the tree list is just approved trees.
Right, so that, that's why, when I looked at this, it was, okay, why do I care, right?
Well, because if you wanna put a tree in your yard, they're gonna suggest, when you go to the city.
But that, that's where this permit is, I have to pick from this list for your right of way.
You wanna put a tree in your yard.
That's a different list.
But you can use this list.
Yeah, you can, but, yeah. Let's say longer.
You may not, but you could.
Alright, continuing on.
So.
So, sorry, so if I was to plant a tree in my backyard, my house would open until since December ninety-eight, I'd have to come to the forestry or I could? Cause obviously I'm not gonna put one in my front yard, cause I have a little boulevard, we have a little sidewalk, so if I was to put a tree in my yard, do I have to use that list or I could just do whatever I want?
The tree list is a suggestion, for if you're putting it anywhere other than the boulevard. But you, yeah, you put it in.
But in essence, there, there is, the, the, the home, the homeowner would get a permit before planting a tree in the right of way. That's what this is intended for.
Yes, and, and the forestry committee person, whoever that is, will help them select the location.
Okay.
As well for the tree, so that it obviously isn't too close to.
But yeah, for this, I, I put uh, the advisory committee, the code administrator and, or, or, excuse me, or a city representative. So they'll help them and say, okay, you can't have it this close, or here's where you can put it.
So.
But the gist of tonight was, second reading of the tree ordinance, and then approval of these supplemental documents to go with it, so then, if the, as soon as the city enacts this, that someone's asking, the city doesn't have any forms. And it's something I'm trying to work on with these new ordinances that we pass, that we need to have these forms ready for city use, um, as soon as they're approved.
It was approved, yep.
Fantastic, I mean, they can be changed later.
Yep.
As whatever, anything that can be changed later.
So yeah, like I said, the, the ordinance itself has not changed, it's just documents are added to it.
Yeah, that was my question, it hasn't changed since the first reading.
And it's nice to have a permit right off the bat, that's all.
So what I'd be looking for, Mister Mayor, is a recommendation on the second reading.
Yep, okay. Any more questions, guys, or do I, I don't know, for a motion?
Make a motion to approve the tree ordinance.
Okay, Brian makes a motion, can I get a second?
A second.
Sharon got the second, so, alright, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright.
And then with that, you approve, now you can approve all of the, the documents to go with it, the, and you can do it in one motion, the tree list, the tree removal permit and the tree planting permit.
So we're basically enacting these permits. At, now that the ordinance is in place, we're enacting the permit use.
The ordinance will go into effect upon the mayor's signature.
So, make a motion to apply the permits per the ordinance that was, you know, tree ordinance that was just enacted for current usage.
We need a separate motion?
Yep.
Yeah, that's what you were saying, we need a separate motion for that.
Okay, so Brian made a motion, Sharon made her second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hey. Perfect.
So we can put those up on the website?
Absolutely.
Yep, so people can download them and be the way to go.
Download this, they could actually, they could do this online, right? They could fill these out online and submit it.
Make it a lot easier.
So once, once we get the forestry committee, whoever the representatives are, those applications will go to them electronically.
Hopefully decide that at the meeting.
Yep.
Lucas, your next.
Yep, Mister Mayor, the, the next item I have, second reading of the um stormwater management ordinance. With that being said, at the last meeting, you requested that I draft a stormwater uh fee schedule before you approved the second reading, so I did that. You can let me know if you want to add to it.
So is that in the ordinance document itself, or?
This will be.
You put it in this, Lucas. Oh my gosh.
This will be on file with the, this is the office.
So this is basically a resolution, this is a resolution document that supplements the ordinance.
It's cause it's a fee schedule.
Cause we can modify the, the fee schedule by resolution then, right?
Correct.
Isn't there a fine schedule too, or was that?
For not complying.
Yeah.
Well, failure to obtain, and that, that's what I said, it's up to you guys, what you want me to add to it, um.
It's the last one.
So yeah, failure to obtain a stormwater permit is on there, that's, that's basically a fine.
Oh, failure to keep it up.
And we can add that as well.
I was thinking fine for non-maintenance.
Right.
You know, a violation of.
So we'll just.
You can get a permit and nothing.
We'll just add one, that says failure to comply with stormwater permit.
Right.
And it's how much.
But isn't there so much per day, isn't that, wasn't that?
It's each, each day a violation continues, it's considered a separate offense.
So, cause it would be, would it be failure to comply?
But right now, so, right now, the way that it's written, is any failure with this ordinance is a violation of the city's ordinance, uh, penalty ordinance, which is section one, zero two eleven, I think, and that's up to a thousand dollars a day, so that has more weight to it than us adding one on here that's a hundred bucks.
What does Fargo, West Fargo have for non-compliance?
They, they use this.
What about for when they?
Their, for, for their non-compliance, theirs is uh more intense, which it just didn't seem to work uh for the city of Horace, it's a, a whole administrative review process. Um, and they have different types of penalties that the city of Horace doesn't have. And so it's, they're called administrative penalties and the city of Horace doesn't have.
So would it be something we add on here, you add a failure to comply?
And it's up to you.
I, I would.
So this is no different than our utility schedule, cause we can modify this anytime we want.
Yep.
So, my question to you is, should we add one that says failure to comply with stormwater permit, set that, or do you want it to be a failure would, would go to the traditional?
Let's approve this as it is, and then we can come back next month and, you know, and modify.
If we wanted to.
Well, we gotta have a failure to comply.
And I'm saying right now, fail, failure to comply is a direct uh disavance or whatever, direct violation of the city's ordinances, which carries with it um up to a thousand dollars a day.
Okay, but my, so my question is, what's the, what I like about this document, I'll say, is that it documents a failure to comply in something that you can give to the, give to the violator, it has a date on it, it's signed, and just a violation of the ordinance has no documentation associated with it.
And that, and that's a, a good point, because with the system of going with the traditional one, it's basically letting a judge to decide what the, the fee is, or what the fine would be, up to a thousand dollars.
So, it'd be, make more sense to add a failure to comply, a hundred dollars a day?
Well, another violation in the ordinance itself is failure to comply results in removal of the permit or uh suspension of the permit, and then they have to stop any construction activities, which is a pretty big penalty.
That's a better deal.
For these companies.
But it still needs, what I'm saying, John, is it still needs to be documented, we have no way to document a failure to comply. You have nothing that you're gonna send to the person, you've got nothing in a file somewhere that says.
Well, there's, there's a line. We can create that summary of the, we don't have to ch, set that by resolution, we can create that as a separate document independent of these, cause these are our legal documents. So how we communicate that to everyone is a separate issue from the legal element of this.
Well, I think what Sharon's saying is, you've got your required fees down here, and then you got failure to obtain a stormwater permit, it does make sense to have right underneath it.
Can't disagree, can't disagree.
It says, the ordinance says the city engineer shall document the reporting of a violation in writing.
And that's, you know.
Okay, but then what hap, but, but you're not, but what happens next, right? You document it, so what does he do with it? Does a letter get sent out to the person, how do they know?
The ordinance walks.
Are they getting an invoice from Vance, here's a thousand dollars a day?
The ordinance walks through the process of if there is a violation, the engineer writes it up, here's what you need to do to comply, so then whoever is in violation has to comply and the city engineer has to approve it.
Here, here's all the steps right here, so fifteen twenty-four, here's all the steps that they have to go through.
How do they get, how do they get a fine? I mean, we don't want, I don't wanna fine have to go to a judge, that's, that complicates something that shouldn't be complicated.
You know, I'm trying to think of how it works in Fargo, West Fargo, normally when there's a lack of compliance, you give a phone call, and everybody knows how stiff it can be, and I think the second step is you take in, you stop construction, that's gonna be the biggest.
But how do you stop it? Again, what, what's?
That's our, we have to police it ourselves, just like you have to police the big dog, our dogs out front.
Jim can say, I wanna stop construction, but how do you actually stop it on the job site? It's not like he walks over there and turns the key.
It says it right here, that the memo outlining the termination of the city engineer and any enforcement action taken and or non-compliance fees levied. So this has to be documented in a record that's. So, the, the process is there, the processes are there, and it leading it open to, you know, whoever's assessing the non-compliance, whoever the inspector is, well, instead of the city engineer, right?
Mm-hmm.
The city engineer to document this, and then come up with the recommended compliance actions, whether that includes stopping construction or not.
So I'm asking for, what's the internal procedure, that's not part of the ordinance, that says what happens when a non-compliance occurs? That's really what I, the question I'm asking, because we don't have an internal procedure that defines what happens next, and that's exactly what I'm asking for. And I don't want it in ordinance, but I do wanna know what it, what it is, and I think we need an internal procedure that very clearly says, here's exactly what, what happens. So whether it's Jim or anybody else in the future that's doing it, they know, hey, you go past this development, they're not complying, you do what? What do you do? How does the, how does the work stop? How's the developer getting it right? How do the fine get issued? That's really what I'm asking.
We can do that, it just, but, but that's a separate activity from.
From tonight.
The ordinance.
Yep.
I completely agree with you, completely agree, I'm just saying, that's a separate document from these documents.
And, and there, there is, the, the whole process is lined up.
Yeah, it's, I'm pretty sure I read it.
It's, it's, there's revocation of a permit, then there's a notification, the hearing that has to take place, legal action, there's a whole section on that enforcement for non-compliance and re-inspection fees, which that's where it ties to this fee schedule.
I mean, cause I, I'm, we're not, I guess I'll move it with Jim separately, cause what I'm really asking is, is for not the ordinance, but the internal step-by-step procedure, because, and the reason it's so prudent right now is it's April. There's building going on today, and as soon as the snow all melts, these developers are gonna start, and guaranteed, there's gonna be a minimum of one violation, if not many, as things kick off, so we need to be sure today, we've got a step-by-step procedure that anybody can follow. And that if we're issuing a penalty of a hundred dollars a day or whatever it is, how does that penalty get issued?
Who, who's gonna go build that?
Oh, that's, exactly, my point, is that does Vance issue?
Well, no, are we asking Lucas to go build that or, or Jim to go build that?
Well, okay, I didn't set up this procedure, so I'm asking the question, and, I mean, I don't wanna be the person to say, here's the step-by-step.
Today, today we can go by what is here. Today we can go by what's in the ordinance.
But I want more than that, I, I want.
I get it, I, I get it.
But not tonight.
We're not gonna get it tonight.
Not tonight.
I get it, but when?
Tonight. It won't be tonight.
It's an action item that we'll take.
Tonight.
I get it, I got it, I wrote it down as, you know, as an action item that we'll take, but it's.
Does it make sense?
Absolutely, it makes sense, so.
But, we've already gone through that now, okay, so, second reading, will you approve it?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, Brian makes a motion, get a second. Okay, John, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright. So, got that one. So, got that one done. Next one, Lucas.
Yeah, how many violations there were last year that we got?
Uh, the next one is just, I just would like approval from the city council. The ordinance is already in the books, chapter two oh three is relating to excavation in the city. And there's a, the ordinance requires that the excavator register in the city, and then if there's any excavation done, they get an application to excavate. The application is already on the books, what's not on the books is a registration form to register as an excavator in the city of Forests. So I just created a document.
That'll be something we should probably get online then, too, because they've got.
Yes, because Vance didn't have one in the office.
Do we also require contractors to register? To make sure that they have insurance and such?
That's part of the, that's part of bonding, right, whenever a contractor's gonna do some building? When they, are you talking about the home contractor or commercial? Which contractor?
For public work, they, they have to.
They have all that, it's the private.
It's required by the statute.
Residential, when you're getting like builders coming in and contractors or.
They have to be licensed through the state.
Who, who checks that license element of it? Is that the inspector? Perry? Perry's responsible for doing that?
So do they register with them?
You mean he gives a permit, you mean, does he check that?
Um, I don't think so.
Do they register with them, how would you know they're even in town?
Well, they have to get a building permit.
But not.
Not each individual subcontractor.
Well, to build a home, they have to submit a building permit, with the architecture drawing and everything to go along with it.
That's the one person that submits, that's the only person that Perry would know. If there's a subcontractor who work on there, he might not.
Oh yeah, subcontractors, yeah, there's no way.
That's what I'm saying, it's like a general would have to get the building.
It's up to the builder, the general contractors, their responsibility.
Yeah, they fall underneath them.
They're the ones who have to carry the insurance.
I think, I think every building permit is given, should be checked by the city to make sure that.
They have insurance.
That they're licensed.
Their, their licenses.
Every public bid that we open has a contractor's license, a renewal form on the outside before we even open the bid.
That's public, that's easy.
Well, it's, it's a quick search if you know who it is, you just go on the North Coast Secretary of State's website, type it in, the business records search, and then it says if they're in good standing.
You won't find insurance though on, on.
No, you'll just find if they're in good standing with the state of North Coast.
So shouldn't they bring a copy of their insurance certificate?
And I don't know what's in, I don't know what's on the building permit, what's required to be on it, I haven't looked at it.
Got it online, it's on the website, so you can.
So I'll just have to look tomorrow and see what it's.
Do you need us to approve this?
Yes, please.
To enact this?
Do, do, does this require them to bring a copy of their insurance? Like a copy of their insurance certificate? Or, because how does it get verified?
It's the policy number is required to be on there.
So how does it get verified?
I suppose we could call whoever, if it's progressive insurance or whoever, I don't know, whoever.
But I mean, nobody's gonna do that.
Well, it would be whoever they're gonna give this to. It would have to be the building.
Oh, two oh three. The ordinance requires it to be, um, shown, for the insurance to be shown upon, um, registering.
So they have to submit a copy of their insurance certificate?
Yeah, so it is, uh, with, when they register, the insurance is required. Any person, firm or corporation's license as an excavator must file proof of liability insurance in the amount of two million dollars with the city auditor. The insurance must name the city as an additional insured as to whom the coverage is required, are in full force and applicable, and for whom defense will be provided as to all such coverages. The insurance shall also require that the city auditor be notified thirty days in advance of cast, cancellation of the policy or material modification of a coverage term. So they have to, they have to provide their certification.
Motion to approve this.
Yep, John, motion to approve, second, Brian, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Jim, if you're still awake, you're up.
Oh, I'm always awake.
Ah, boy.
Attentive. All right, we had two bid openings last Thursday afternoon. First project that we opened bids for was two thousand seventeen zero seven, which was the Maple Lane Maple Circle. That one's easy, we didn't get any bids. I talked to, seriously, yeah. So I talked to a couple contractors, and there were a couple items on there that they were a little, they were a little bit hesitant to do the work on. The main one was the pond and the fountain. So what I was, I was hoping that Councilman Fennel was gonna be here tonight to kinda get his idea and the residents, but I'll reach out to him via email tomorrow.
Get him an email, because he's traveling.
That's what I figured, so I'll reach out with him tomorrow, and then I'm gonna visit with the attorneys to see if there's a way where we can make that project something that's a little more attractive to the bidders. Uh, that was, I kept a couple of them after the bid opening and just asked them why there wasn't any interest in that. And a lot of it was the pond and the fountain and the pond, so, um, unfortunate, but we're, this is early enough in the year where we don't jeopardize anything. I'm, I anticipate having a recommendation in two weeks when I come back, of something that we can do to increase the interest in that bid.
Okay.
So that's that one.
Is that too small?
No, it's just that we, the, the bulk of the project was concrete valley gutters and concrete line ditches, and then we throw a pond excavation and a fountain on top of it. And it's just kinda, it's kinda two different, two different things, and, and I, and that was, I don't know if the timing was wrong or what, or, or whatever, but, like I said, I did keep a couple contractors after, and we just talked a little bit, and that was what it was. So I'll visit with attorneys, visit with Councilman Fennel, and come forward with something that can be maybe a little more attractive. So the other project that we bid was Northwood and Southwood Drives. On that project, we have one, two, three, four, five, we had six bidders, so we had good turnout on that one. Uh, we had a estimate, estimated cost of two hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars, and the low bid was from Border States paving of a hundred and sixty thousand, ninety-two dollars.
Hmm.
So, very favorable. Um, as part of that project, there was an alternate number one at the request of Public Works or city staff to remove the median on Northwood Drive. There's a area where the road divides, and there's a bunch of trees in the middle of it. Uh, they, they requested, uh, they would like to see it gone, got the numbers just to kinda proceed with it. Uh, for that work, uh, the estimate was seventy-two thousand and change, and the bid from Border States was thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars and twenty-five cents additional. So.
Get it done.
Uh, well, the question is.
They could do it for under two hundred thousand.
I, well, I think you maybe wanna talk to the residents along Northwood Drive that would be affected by that, that would kinda be my thought. See if there's any heartburn to removing those trees in that median, I, I, I think that's probably the most, the best way versus just doing it, so.
I agree.
Um, I think that I'll, I'll sit down with Vance and Matea, and I, and we'll get some form of communication out to those residents along that, that area to.
No, I know, but as far as the cost goes, that's not bad.
The cost is, is very, very nice.
I was expecting it to be a lot higher, actually.
Yeah, there were, um, we, our bids ranged from a hundred and sixty thousand dollars all the way up to two hundred, two hundred and roughly sixty thousand. And, uh, the estimate went from thirty-eight thousand all the way up to ninety thousand, so there was a good range there. We were, the estimate was pretty close to right in the middle, so we're competitive bid environment, so, um, I would ask that we don't do any action on that. We can certainly do it at the next meeting, we'll, I'll sit down with Matea and Vance and get some letters or get some notice out to those, those people to. Get some input, I, I just hate to push something on them.
Yeah.
Have it come back to, uh, come back to us.
What was the bid again on the Northwood, Southwood Drive?
Northwood, Southwood, uh, you want the estimate or the low?
The low.
One hundred and sixty thousand and ninety-two dollars, one six zero zero nine two.
So how many homes are, do you know how many?
Oh, I don't remember how many homes are off the top of my head on that, and, and, um, I, I don't remember, but. It looked like a fairly favorable, pretty close in the bidding for the most part, um, Border States is.
How's this gonna be funded?
Does it go all the way?
This is funded by special assessments as of right now.
As of right now, we subject, we can.
We're gonna talk about that, yeah, we will keep talking about that.
Right now.
Yep, so.
Does it go all the way, like, to where?
Starts at Cheyenne Drive, starts at Cheyenne Drive, goes all the way down Northwood, wraps around on Southwood, past Liberty, past Cheyenne Drive again, goes all the way down to the dead end by the tracks, uh, east of Mossway, and then it actually, it goes up to the north and takes in what? If you Google, it's called Southwind Drive, but I can't find any record of that, it's a continuation of Southwood. So it's that whole horseshoe area in there, that was one of the identified, identified projects through the CIP to get done.
So is that something you, they think they can do in like sections in a day? I mean, like, because you know, those, that street so narrow, I don't know how people are gonna get in and out when.
Right, and, and that's something that we'll have to discuss, I, I, we haven't even.
Right.
Awarded anything to start talking about it yet, there, there is a maintaining access provision in the plans that will be emphasized during the pre-construction conference and before construction works, and notification's another one too. Utilizing the communication of the city to let them know what's, you know, what the method of means are, so.
I gotta listen better, but, how many houses did you think?
I didn't say any, because I, I.
I was taking, making a note.
Yeah, I didn't wanna throw out a, a wrong number, I should've had it, so.
Well, that's something if we know ahead of time, you know, even if it's a month ahead of time.
Yep.
We can get in where it's happening, so we can let people know now that it's gonna happen in June.
Right.
But, you know, it's more, better than when we were doing the relining project and things happened like every week, but.
They change, this is, this isn't a real long-duration project, and it's a fairly, the accessibility will be fairly easy to maintain. It's a mill of the existing surface, so you can still drive on that. It, it is a narrow road, I, I agree, but, you know, you kinda.
Yep.
Without having to jump over everything, I, I think that can be managed, so.
Well, it's really the people that live in the section that's being done.
Right at the Northwood, Southwood area, that's.
Yeah, it's everybody depends.
Yep.
They're really gonna need as much notice as possible to.
Yeah, like I say, I don't envision it being a real long duration, but, I've been wrong before.
So do you have the, the sixth through the thirteenth of July, and the John Scramble at all?
Yes, okay.
Don't do it over graduation, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, good point. Uh, the next thing we have is change order number five, final for the lining project. I had thought we had approved this before, Vance couldn't find a record of it, and I couldn't find the record of it, so we're gonna do it the right way, and we're gonna redo it. Or do it, whichever way you look at it. So this is a, a contract, a balancing contract, this balances the constructed quantities with the, um, contract quantities. This was for an increase of eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and thirty cents for a, or wait a minute, I'm sorry. It's for a decrease of sixty-three thousand dollars, eight hundred and eleven and five cents. And there is a justification that was sent out as part of this change order as to where the, um, what the differences were, why there was change in the work, so. Our total contract for this project would be eight hundred and forty-five thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-five cents, which is roughly four, three, two, about twenty-three thousand dollars more than what we anticipated. We got a lot of, a lot more out of that project than that twenty-three thousand would indicate, so. It's a, very close, and we're within our, what we had budgeted, or, or contingencies and stuff, so. We will be looking for a motion to approve this, this, uh, change order, the balancing change order, five, number five for two thousand sixteen one.
So, so.
All right, Brian, get the motion, John, just a second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Did we pay the contractor already?
Uh, we have, we've, we've paid him up to retainage, we have some retainage left over on that one. Uh, there's still some, there's one outstanding item in the warranty period with, uh, warm criminal sewer service. That's supposed to be coming up here in April to repair that when they're gonna be in the area. And, uh, that was kind of our, our final hurdle, and there's some, some final paperwork too, that, for the, uh, Department of Health, so. Uh, we do still have some money, albeit not a lot, I think it's five thousand dollars of retainage, so. Uh, the next thing on our list here is the Improvement District two thousand eighteen two Horseshoe Bend and Services sixty-fourth Avenue. I sent out a summary as of, I believe it was last Wednesday, the date of agenda items, so.
This interest survey?
Yeah, that's the one. We kinda broke it down just a little bit so you all would see that. So we show that we've got a, a quick rundown of it. Brink's, what we decided last time was a no, there's an awful lot of no's on that one. Greyhawk, there's a lot of no's, somewhat, quite a few, uh, there's a fair amount of undecideds, so I suppose there's.
Some of those undecided, I recall being, you know, depends on the project cost.
Yeah, that's a lot of them, a lot of the undecideds are.
Undecided were saying, hey, I just wanna know more about the project, what would it, what would it cost, so. I mean, if, if it was within the margin of yes and no's, and the, and if the undecided swung the yes, swung it to yes, then.
So is that, is that how we wanna go forward with it, we'll put the undecideds in the yeses column?
Well, if, if, we, did we, how far do we go?
I know, that's the thing.
If, if, it could get approved, right? It like Brink's, there was, I mean, even with the additional five and the yes, there's no way it's gonna get approved.
Brink's is a no, Brink's is definitely.
That's what I mean, let's eliminate those that we just know we're not gonna do.
So, so what would you like, would you like me to come back at the next meeting, we will have closed the period by then? Give you a final number, and we can look at it kind of with my recommendation.
Greyhawk right now wouldn't make it as a yes, even if all seven of them went to yes, it's not gonna make it.
It's, it's a, it's a.
Then you'd be a fifty-fifty.
Forty-nine fifty.
Maple Grove, kinda the same boat, right? It, it's not gonna get to fifty for fifty. So, I mean, those are, I mean, there's still, there's still quite a few that have not responded, so.
I, I think so, yeah.
We could open for a little bit longer.
We, we certainly can, and maybe you wanna, can you put a push out on the, on the?
We can do it one more time.
Put a push on the internet?
Facebook and so forth.
Yeah, 'cause we've gotten some, and I've actually gotten some interest from people outside of these areas too, that have noticed the link on the website and filled it out through the Civic Plus, so.
So Riverdale is one of those that fall into that category, right?
Yep.
So that was, you know, pretty much in, uh, there's still quite a few that could swing it, but that one is, I will put that one in the yes category, that we should at least go get the costing.
And that's, and I would agree with that, I think that's the next step would be if, if we're close, is to do, get the cost and maybe the feasibility and the potential for a project. That was a big cost, number one, how are you gonna do it, number two, what's it gonna cost, and number three, what is my house gonna benefit from?
Well, and I think, and I think number four comes in, if everybody in the neighborhood doesn't wanna do it, but the project goes through, is it possible to just not connect from the curb stop to the home?
Skip, skip them or, or, I mean.
Well, I mean, because.
Get them on another, with a connection.
Because again, like in the big picture, that's the part that makes sense, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Get, getting the line in, and then you can choose not to do the curb stop.
Yeah, you just would have to make a provision that, that you would recoup some of that cost, so they don't think, you, get away from the mindset of, well, it's going by me, I'm not gonna hook up now, I'll miss the assessment, and then next year I'll hook up to it.
No, actually, the question is, what would, what would it still cost me?
Yeah, exactly.
Just to get that loop, to have it there, because in the big picture, it really does increase the value of your property if you have that connection.
Absolutely.
Whether you're there, or, or you use it, or you don't use it, it truly makes your property worth more.
Sure, sure.
So, that. That's why it makes sense to get the, get the cost and have the meeting.
Along the same line, some of these developments won't necessarily get a second shot.
No.
It's the other thing to keep in mind, though.
Be aware.
Where some of the great, Greyhawk, Maple Grove, they've got undeveloped land to the west.
Yeah.
It probably doesn't make sense for them to hook up now, it could probably come in better for them, more feasible later on.
Yeah, it very well.
Exactly, but some of these ones, we may.
The ones on the west side of the river are, are a little more difficult.
Right.
You know, shuttling lane, gosh, that's pretty new, so, it really doesn't surprise me that most of them said, said no.
No, and that's the, that's the, what I've heard from a couple, is I've got a septic system, I paid to put it in, it's good for me now, and I had one guy say that, that, yeah, I have a kind of a manipulated septic system, and for me and my wife, it's fine, but for a family of five, it may not be sufficient, so. For, if I'm gonna sell my house and somebody middle-aged, or somebody with a big family wanna buy it, it's gonna be a, a knock against it, it's actually up in your neighborhood.
No, I've heard it from, actually from over on Sunnyside.
Okay, well, I've, when I heard it from your neighborhood, yeah.
Well, honestly, you gotta take that.
Sleeping Hollow, the same, that's the same exact deal.
You take the east part of the river to Cheyenne and run that up, that's the part that's gonna be hard to get to later on.
Yeah. So, we'll do that, we'll come forward with that. Uh, last thing I had on the list was water meter update, I have some good news, finally, on that. Um, the water meters with integral shut-off valves that we're very interested in are, um, as I'm told, gonna be available this week. And the distributor would like to come out sometime this week, I haven't heard yet, I will reach out to him and see if he's got a more of a defined date, would he like to come out here and demonstrate them, and just kinda show the guys what they, what they encompass, so. Um, I've put together, um, some, he won't, he hadn't, didn't have costing at the time, he said he'd have it when they got shipped, but I put together some numbers, provided Vance with the application for the funding today based kinda loosely on those numbers, so he can start putting some of his stuff together. There's some stuff for you, Brian, the revenue of some, some projected revenues and stuff that I'm thinking you maybe have in your spreadsheet.
Oh, you need that for the, the application?
Because you, we have to go back three years and forward two years.
Okay.
So, the revenues and stuff I know are kinda gonna vary on that, so.
Well, we got the revenue from, well, past two years, so we can take a gander at some projected revenue.
Yeah, and that, that's the one we'd ask.
Yep.
And, um, I'm projecting, uh, as far as, as far as, as long as DSG or one of the suppliers gets out here, which shows us that, and the availability is there in two weeks at the next meeting, I would ask for authorization to get that thing out and get it to the people, so. Get it to the bits, so. get it to the bits, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we are seeing some light at the end of that tunnel. It's been a long process, but there's been some technology that's crept up on us that's been good for the city.
It's all gonna be good when it's done. We shouldn't wait a little bit.
Yeah, exactly. Just waiting. So, um I don't know. I, I guess the one thing that wasn't on the list, I know, John, you had mentioned earlier, was the lagoon smell. Um, part of that was this, it this year was an exceptional year with for cold and ice and it kind of killed off all the bugs and they go to aerobic from anaerobic. They're suggesting themselves, they release it. And then it didn't help much that Adam decided to remove, to move the, move the sewage from one pond to the other one because they were running low on storage.
They're proactive, yeah.
Yep, so, and it didn't help a couple of those days. The wind just was not there and it just, it just hung. It just hung in the air, so, um
Especially like Thursday.
Yeah, I, it got real thick, so.
Can we look at that solar be option and get an estimate for putting it in a lagoon to keep the water moving and
Well, if you wanted to put an aerator in there, it is something we, we could look at. I mean, I don't know how much money you guys wanna spend on that considering that we, we wanna be sunsetting, daylighting those at, at some point in time and
Yeah, but when you say sunsetting, what, what do you, what do you mean?
As far as decommissioning them, I think it's longer than five years. Just, I think it's probably closer to ten.
And I think we should look at something.
Some form of a, is that something, something you wanna look at is form an aerator or something like that?
Shoot something to us.
Well, and those solar be are mainly used in solar, it's a
Even to get an idea of the general cost, because we should have some maintenance costs built into
Sure.
Our revenue model for wastewater, so.
Dude, isn't there some, there's some chemical stuff, like I can, I mean, I say chemical, but I mean, it's more like, uh
Fabreeze?
Yeah. I mean, there's something like I can put in there though that gets the, gets the bacteria going quicker.
There's ferris oxide, which typically gets injected into lift stations. West Fargo does it. They dose with that and it's more of a, keep the hydrogen sulfide gases down. Um, I, I don't know of it much at a lagoon type of an application. It's more of a along the line type of a, a deal, but it's something that we could definitely look into. But if you want me, I'll look into it or whatever.
Just exploring some options. I don't really wanna break the bank on those.
Yeah, exactly.
They're not that expensive.
If you're looking for a place to put evergreens behind the lagoon, maybe a little some vine smelling.
Act it made.
Don't move on. It's my thought.
Anyway, all right.
Move on.
Yep. Okay. That's all I have.
You got it? All right. On the portfolio reports, John, what you got? Anything?
No.
Dave, quiet. All right. Sharon?
Uh, grants. We, so I received a phone call last week from the North Florida Department of Agriculture with regard to our community orchard grant that we had applied for back in December. And they said we will be receiving shortly, sometime in the next two weeks, uh, vitamin of April approval for the grant. And they're going to approve of the fifteen thousand that we applied for, they're going to approve six thousand of it. And the only thing they took out was the blueberry plants because they said that on the review panel there was somebody who knew there was some problem with blueberry plants and some problem with them dying and they didn't want us to plant a hundred sixty-five of them and have them all die. So they said they took them out and they planted strawberries. So we said, okay, that's a start. So we just have to wait for those vacuums to weather and such that we get in the next couple of weeks. Um, the condition of the grant is that it has to be planted this year by fall. They recommend in September, October. And the grant period actually ends next year in the spring, so like May, which would give us time because they wanted it. Their suggestion was that we plant it this year so that if anything dies off over the winter, that then they're still plenty available that can be used to get new plants if you have to replace anything in, in the spring before you close it out. So that ties in with um, the project that Zach was talking about for some of the funding coming in from that grant. Forestry Grant we are still working on. Uh, we're having a meeting on Thursday at seven o'clock here. Uh, we have preliminary approval from the landowner on the north end of town. I just have to visit with Jim. Um, he did ask that, you know, of that whole tract of land, his question was, well, where would you like to put it?
Are we talking the county or the other?
Not the county, the landowner, Holber, Steve Holber. So he said, can you, if you can tell me, he goes, I'm in favor of it.
Okay.
That's fine, but do you know where?
Sure.
And I said, well, not exactly. And then he talked, he talked about his tree line and the right of way and whatever. So I said, I, I told him I'd get with you to kind of think about where it is we want it to. And I said, we're open to working with him wherever
Yeah.
Um, whatever kind of area works, just that it would be visible when you come around and roundabout. So you know, he goes, well, if you could do something to get rid of those green boxes. Not get rid of them, but you know, block them from looking so ugly. And I said, well, I'll do it like that. But anyway, so that's a step in the right direction. And I still have to talk to the landowner at the south. I haven't connected with them yet. Um, but those grants have to be applied for by the end of this month. So we are actively working on those. Uh, what's the other thing? Bean Days Committee meeting will be on the twelfth, so not this Thursday, next Thursday.
Did you guys come up with a date for the Bean Days?
Yes.
I hope it's the weekend of the tenth.
No. It's the same weekend it was.
Okay.
It's the final, seventeen, eighteen.
Of August?
Yep.
The other reason I would say that, John, um, Kelly's bringing in Johnny Holmes on the tenth of August, and I think he was trying to coordinate that.
Well, if he
Just saying.
We're probably at the whim, we're probably at the whim of Johnny Holmes' schedule more than his schedule, so.
Bean Days is what, what day?
It's gonna change. It's undecided. That's letters or anyone out, I mean It'd be nice if he would come to a meeting.
He hasn't talked about the nineteen-ninth, coordinated with the Bean Days, and I just don't know if I'm gonna have to bring it up, but uh um, I think that's something that, you know, would be a good idea.
Oh, nineteen-ninth?
Yeah, I just don't know how, um, is that coordinated with you guys or how you wanna do that? There's like a timeframe, you like us to be in, it's all day or if we do like an eleven, one or two, or probably eleven, two, or a ten, one, or I don't know.
So you're thinking Saturday?
Um, I don't know, I'm sure.
Saturday would be the day of the parade in the morning, so that would, it would work well after the parade.
As a parade?
Nine?
Don't you guys leave it?
Kitty, kitty, what's that?
Yeah, ten o'clock, so.
The pancake feed goes till nine thirty.
Yes. She knows the timing.
So
I just want to put that on.
But yeah, I think that's how we'll have to think about it, because we're upset. We're talking to the Parks Department about a better way of coordinating with them so that we try to keep everything in the same part of town and just, you know, thinking about closings. The whole plan is to close off main from the four-way stop sign for the whole day, instead of just doing it in the morning and then doing, opening it and then doing it at night. Do the car show down there, um, put the vendors in proximity so people can walk around, so and if we're gonna do that, then it's, it's again, that whole coordination of, okay, if you do that, maybe then we coordinate with the fire hall and other locations so that everything is in, certainly within walking distance. So once people park, we can just move around easier and it creates continuity. But if he's bringing in a band on the whole another night, he's not gonna bring a band in the second weekend either.
Probably not.
So now we got problems.
Well, let's, we'll find out. I just saw that got posted today on Facebook, so let's just, something to pay attention to.
Yeah.
Okay.
More headaches. Okay, that's it. That's all I got.
Got it. Brian, go.
Uh, so we've got a, uh, just for everyone's education, we Horace has joined the what's called North Dakota Moves. It's part of the, the North Dakota Department of Transportation. Uh, Horace has been selected or joined one of ten communities uh in the state uh that are gonna be participating in this uh, this Bismarck, Mandan, Grant, Forks, Williston, Hayes, and Rugby, Graffin, Botno, Oates, and Horace. So we are the only one in Cass County that's gonna be participating in this. Uh, we have the workshop scheduled for April sixteenth uh, for a half day. We asked to, limited to a half-day workshop rather than a full-day workshop because it's just time commitment. But that, uh, contractors or the, the, the architects for North Dakota Moves are coming up from Minneapolis. Uh, and they will be, uh, hosting this workshop for the afternoon of the sixteenth, so we will wanna block some time. Jim, I'm hoping you can attend that event as well. Uh, but, you know, if there's other people from planning and zoning, other people from Park Board that can participate in that, it's gonna be some brainstorming to come up with ideas for what we can do to participate and, and come up with some ideas for example, how could we participate and use bike paths, unique ideas for bike paths, uh, unique ideas for, uh, roundabouts, whatever, right? There's lots of different options for what we can do uh with this act of transportation demonstration. So uh, this first part is just collecting the information. Uh, then, once the, after we're through the workshop, we'll be putting together a timeline and a project uh, to actually implement this. And if we can arrange that with other events in the city, that'd be the best case scenario. So August may be a good time. We could tie in some of the North Dakota Moves activities with Bean Days uh to have the demonstration projects and everything set up. Get a lot of people in town, that kind of thing. So we could possibly tie this in as a, and, and there's some potential funding, uh, we can tap for putting together the demonstration areas, et cetera. Uh, so we'll be working on that schedule. So having Bean Days scheduled will be a good thing going into the workshop. So, put your thinking caps on, think, come up with suggestions for, you know, who should participate in the workshop or can participate. But then also, uh, ideas for things that we should be demonstrating. Uh, as, you know, recommendations for unique ways to improve biking or walking or whatever. Does Zach's project, does that make sense to bring that into the fold on that? What do you mean? For a community idea, like you talked earlier?
It's more transportation-based.
This is more transportation.
The moves.
Yeah, this is, yeah, pretty much all transportation.
With the sidewalks, beautification.
Yeah.
Could be.
It's more about moving around.
It's infrastructure-related, so.
So there's, there's creative ways that, you know, we could use it as an opportunity to say, how can we encourage biking and engage residents to
Biking, walking.
Ideas out there.
Yep.
How can we encourage walking? How can we encourage, you know, maybe we, maybe we ask Kelly to set up a, a pop-up, you know, restaurant. You know, or park space out in front, you know, along the street as an idea of what could, what is possible, right? So, uh, just ideas then, and we could set up something like this with Bean Days to, to collect information. Cass County is very interested in this and I've got three people from Cass County that are, said they are going to participate, so I think they're gonna be very, very helpful.
Which is good. That's what we want.
Which is absolutely valuable.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanna help what we're gonna, how we're gonna do that.
Yeah, that's what the brainstorming is about.
Yep, the first, first step is just brainstorming. So that's where, come to the workshop, let's throw ideas out there and we'll have them help us figure out how we can you know, dovetail these things together.
Even the crazy stuff can come into play here.
Absolutely. So let's come up with some, you know, really great ideas for how we can make our community, you know, really interesting, so.
And they might, they'll have some guidelines or just some ideas that they'll throw out. We can just expound on that, so.
Yep, yep.
No, it, this is all goodness.
I, it's just awesome that, hey, we're the only city in Cass County that's getting this and we could get some, you know, there again, if we get some participation from, you know, media and so forth to help, uh, make, get, make awareness will be a good thing.
By the way, thanks for taking that call.
Hey, no problem.
Just could not get away.
Oh, I got it.
All right. Anything else? Okay. Uh, undermined stuff. Budget time. We starting to work on that. Let's start figuring out what we wanna do. So for basically, I'll throw a call out, um, to the boys and all that stuff. If there's stuff that they want, let's put together the wish list, let's see what we got. Come up with some ideas. Not everything's gonna happen, but let's get it out there so we kind of start projecting some numbers. Um, I might be gone on April sixteenth. I won't know yet. So, love to see you Monday. I'm gonna, I'm gonna gone on Wednesday and Thursday this week. Um, Vance, question for you, sales tax balance. What are we at on that right now? Any idea?
Two thirty-four, I think.
Okay.
Two, three, four.
Any idea what we're kind of sitting at on average or pulling right now? Or getting around twenty-eight, thirty?
It's about twenty-two to twenty-five a month.
So that's, we're about a year in right then?
Yep.
It will be, uh, gonna be a one year.
Okay, good. Um, I met with the second graders in town here last Wednesday. That was kind of cool.
They told me that.
Had a half an hour session with them. Um, they all got questions. The funny thing was though, the theme that they had before I even got to talking about it was sidewalks. When is Horace gonna get sidewalks so they can walk on for safety reasons? It was either somebody's been coaching them a little bit or whatever, but I mean, it's still, it's legit. I mean, cause I know where they have to walk from, especially from the southern part of town to get there, even on their bikes, there's not a wide road to go on, you know? I get it. What's that? Right, you know, I mean, just, I'm just thinking from where I'm at, trying to watch the kids go to school in the mornings, you know, and I see them coming on the bikes, especially when you get to the doorway stop here. You know, you are weaving and dodging. So I told them we're looking into it. I mean, we are, that's part of this Andy Moves thing too. We can hopefully have some with that. But then we get the crosswalk on seventeen and that too, so anyway.
Yeah, and then you think about where would you put the sidewalk, because the lots aren't very wide either. So if you put a sidewalk, why, oh boy.
We talked about that, that that was a thing too. Plus you have to get homeowners' approval. Sometimes they're not, they don't like that.
Yeah.
It's not
And then the crosswalk, of course, will get sometimes in the spring.
Yep. That's what I told them.
That's a step in right direction.
So, all right, that's all I got. So anybody got anything else? Otherwise I'm gonna call it an evening here.
Wish you a journey.
All right. Second, gonna get a second. All right. Brian and Sharon, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye, aye, my count. All right, thank you guys.
Thank you, Larissa. Yeah, I know, that's why Zach was here too. He figured he'd, uh, what's he gonna do for the legal project?
Oh, Lucas?
No, Billy.
Oh, man, I don't know.
He's got a what?
I gotta get the first picture first. We have a month and a half to get it done before thirty minutes, so.
Well, Zach was going.
Yeah.
But
Dave texting, what's the matter of like, you know?
Thanks, Sharon.
And I'm like, I said, well, it's snowing here. I said, what's it like up there at the Jeff Center? He was like, uh, it's really wet and it's supposed to get cold and humid. Yeah, we don't need to be, uh, first